Five thirty something or other. Welcome to all of you tonight to the first March meeting of the Tower City Council. I, as I always do, I welcome the media. Thank you for being here and reporting appropriately for on the proceedings of the council. I also will mention that there is two recordings going on. There's one right up on the bookshelf up there that's being recorded. It's recording us and I hear that Mr. Sipora is also recording with his iPad, which I think appears on social media. I won't elaborate. So anyway, the, we welcome all of you. Just a couple of comments when we get to public input today. I want to remind you that we want to keep public input minutes or reports to like three minutes. And, and the public input is really just informational. It may be in response to something that occurred in a previous council meeting that you want to set clear. But, public input will not be debatable. In other words, the city council will not get into debate over statements made in public opinion if, or public input. If there's, if there's anything of substance, well, of course, there's always something of substance in public input, but if there's anything that does need response and requires council attention, it will, it will appear on a subsequent city council agenda and we'll take it up in an official sense. After public opinion, the council will go into deliberation of the issues and agenda items that are on the agenda. And, and at that point, this becomes a meeting of the city council and input from the council chambers. And again, I appreciate all of you being here. We will call on you if there's a specific reason to have you speak to any of the issues. Otherwise, if you do have something that you're compelled to say, just raise your hand. I'll call on you and I'll ask you what that, what your comment is. So, we want to make, move these meetings along as quickly as possible, but of course, we want transparency and we want, want to hear from you as well. So, with that, I'll do a call to order and ask for roll call.
Anderson, is that him? Abrahamson?
Here.
Dodo?
Here.
Greenson?
Here. And does everyone have an agenda in front of them? Are there any changes to the agenda?
We made some amendments on there already.
Okay. The closed council meeting has been canceled for this evening. That's number five. And Pine Street realignment proposal is, is added. I would like to add one item that I will call, let's just plan call it cybersecurity. It's an issue that I had hoped to have a document to hand out tonight, but my computer's been acting up all day. That's why I got here ten, fifteen minutes later than I normally do. But I will report on that verbally and come back with a report on it afterwards. But it's an issue that will, I will request council action on. So with that, are there any other changes to the agenda? Motion to approve. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll, I'll make that motion.
And support?
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Just a second. For your item here, because I know you were trying to get stuff printed out and everything beforehand, it would be nice to see some of these things in advance if there's something that you're going to be reading through. And I know that's a request you've made yourself of council packets.
I have.
So, you know, it would be nice to get those at the time that we get the council packet and all the materials that get sent out, if at all possible.
Well, Kevin, I, I agree totally. And I've made that point from even long before I was seated as mayor and this council was seated. And I agree that all of the materials should be prepared beforehand and, and the council given time to, to review them. The, the particular thing that, that I wasn't able to print out, I can read it from my computer, but I just simply, it would not print out from my computer. There's something with the connection there that didn't, didn't work. So, if you want to put that off, I can, I can read it at the next council meeting and meanwhile, I can email it to Linda and she can forward it to the council.
I mean, is it something that's like a paragraph or two or is it like ten pages long?
Well, it's several pages long and it's in reply to the page and a half that I received from you at the last meeting.
Sure. Okay.
So, I can, I can read it.
That's a different item than ten point nine. That's a different item than ten point nine.
What I heard was cybersecurity.
Yeah, he's talking about something totally different.
Is it, is this the same item?
Well, what I just mentioned to you, Kevin, I said the, the response to the page and a half of issues that you brought up at the last meeting. And I was to report on them, which I have done in writing.
Okay, I guess I'm just a little confused here.
And I would have sent those out earlier, but I was having trouble both with my computer and with the connection with my printer.
Okay.
So, when we get to that item, Linda, which item is on here again?
Which one are you talking, you lost?
The one that I, Kevin just brought up, the grievance policy, is it the grievance policy or is it the?
No, that'd be number four. So, there is no cyber?
Okay, the mayor, well, there you, you used that term again, misconduct. There is no.
There's no number, there's no cybersecurity or there are two different things that you have?
The one that I wanted to add was on cybersecurity.
Okay, that's what I got.
And I was not able to, to print that out and so I would give that report verbally, but I think it's important enough to, to bring up to the council for review. And I'll follow up with a report to you.
I think Kevin was talking about the cybersecurity, not the number four.
Yeah, he switched. So.
Okay.
So, 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 the cybersecurity is an issue that's come up that I feel is, is important for the council to talk about.
Okay.
And, and it's a request that I'm going to make.
Okay.
That's issue number one. Issue number two is a response to Kevin, which is number four on the agenda, mayor, the mayor investigation. And I do have a report that I've written, but I was not able to get it printed out. And I planned, that's the one that I just talked.
Yeah, that's what I thought you were tabling until the next meeting. I, I understood you were adding the cybersecurity to tonight.
I am.
Okay, that I was fine, that.
Okay.
That's not a problem.
I thought the thing that you were printing out was related to that. That's what I was.
I, I don't think there would be a delineation between cybersecurity to the.
There, there, there was a switch in there, but let me make it clear, clear to everybody. There's two issues. One, I'm adding to the, the agenda, an issue of cybersecurity. Okay, that's number one.
Yep.
And if you want to make that ten point nine, that's, that's fine with me. And the second issue is the one that you and I just talked about in the other office. And that's my response to the, the, the document that I was given by Kevin, which was read in public at the last meeting. And I was requested, I was requested that I give a written response, which I've done. The, and I'll, I'll make this point right now, the, 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 the things that were brought up in Kevin's comments delve into issues that were in a closed meeting. And therefore, in the report that I, that I wrote, I had to answer the questions that, and issues that Kevin brought up. However, in the, for the sake of not bringing up issues that may be private or non-public, I redacted certain sentences and paragraphs from that report. And if I read the report, I would not read those redacted sentences. So, that's the second issue. Is that, is that clear?
I hear you.
Okay. So, on that, I can, I can do one of two things. I can, you can table it if that's what you want. Or I can read what I have, but I'm not willing to read the portions that, that may later be brought to the council as discussing issues that had been discussed in a closed meeting, even though they actually have been brought forth in other ways. I just simply don't want to do it. So, I would answer the essence of the questions that Kevin brought forth, all of those issues, but, but I would leave off certain portions. If you want to think about that until we get to number four, we can, we can discuss that further at that time. Did I make that clear? Okay. I might also apologize. I hope I'm talking loud enough. I'm trying to project my voice because that has been an issue. I've also gone, going into about the fourth week of this, whatever this crud is that affects the voice. I have, I have witnesses here that I've been taking medication. So, if you can't hear me, let me know and I'll try to project louder. My voice is a little weak. So, back to the agenda. Is, there's been a, a motion to accept? And I think we're still, you, you supported?
We had moved in supportive after we added the cybersecurity.
Yeah.
Amendmented.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so, let me do this over again. Is there a motion to accept the agenda as amended?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, is there support?
Support.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, agenda accepted as noted. Want to welcome Jerry Maslowsky here, who is going to talk about the tower deer hunt presentation or deer hunt with it.
Jeremy Maslowsky.
Did I say Jeremy?
Yeah. Jerry, but close enough.
I read Minnesota.
So, Jeremy Maslowsky, Assistant Lot Management here in Tower. I was here for three years, was gone for a year after my term was done and now I'm back on another three-year term. And I've been kind of working in coordination with the city to help administer the, the deer hunt that's gone on here since 2011. So, I think this is the eighth year that we've had an active deer hunt within the city limits on the city of tower property and township of Brighting. So, just kind of run through for some people that are not familiar with it or why, you know, the, the city, this is, DNR can make recommendations, but this all came through the city council and them agreeing that they, they determined that hunt was important. Number one thing is public safety. That's, that's the ultimate goal of having an urban hunt and this is using old archery equipment and muzzleloader. We've never had an accident. It's been extremely successful and safe. Number two goal is reducing our antlerless deer population within town, since they're the ones that are doing the reproduction and, you know, keeping the population going in town. Number three, reducing ornamental tree, garden and trout damage. Anyone with plants or a garden in town, now that the deer will hit them pretty hard if you don't have it well, well fenced off. That's definitely been an area of concern and I've received quite a few calls again this fall on people wanting us to do things, but, you know, we gotta, we gotta use the hunters. We can't just come in and trap the deer and move them. Hunters are, are way of controlling deer within town. Reducing automobile collisions and I know there's been multiple out towards Brighting in Sudan, right on 169, always been a problem area. Reducing disease risks, if you're familiar with chronic wasting disease and the new positive that was found down by Mayor Field, down by Brainerd, that's getting closer to our backyard. So, that's a, disease usually spread by concentrations of deer that are pretty close together and we definitely have that here in town in the winter months. And then the, the last goal is modifying deer behavior, keeping them on their toes and keeping them move around instead of just sitting in one spot all winter long. So, there's two different hunts that go on in town. There's a muzzleloader hunt and an archery hunt. Muzzleloader, we use twenty hunters, archery's ten. This last year, they both had a bag limit of five. Rarely do people take that many deer, but we at least give people the opportunity to be able to harvest that many antlerless deer. Those hunts both start on the Saturday after Thanksgiving and this year was the 24th of November. Muzzleloader hunt corresponds with the statewide muzzleloader hunt, so it ended on Sunday, December ninth, so it's a two-week window. Then the archery hunt runs until the end of the archery season in Minnesota, so 31st of December. So, just kind of running through some of the results of those hunts. The City of Tower Archery Hunt, which is also Brighting, that, they had a harvest of ten, ten total deer, one adult male, four fawns, and then they had five female adults. And then Sudan Underground Mine, they also had a hunt at the same time for muzzleloader. That one took a total of ten deer for just the state park for muzzleloader. And then the City of Tower muzzleloader hunt, which is just on the City of Tower, Brighting property, again, took a total of nine deer, three buckfawns and the rest were all female. So, overall, we ended up taking about ninety percent antlerless, which is excellent. That's what we're, the goal of the hunt is taking antlerless deer, adult males, which don't do the reproducing. This year, I also sent out a survey after the hunt to all of our participants, just kind of gauging what their thoughts are on the hunt, how many days of hunting, total number of hours, whether they're hunting private or public land. I didn't have real good success on getting surveys back, about maybe a third of them. Overall, people that were successful and seen a lot of deer had positive feedback for us. I had from one person that hunted, they had made a recommendation and this is something that the city council can talk about and, you know, if they want DNRs, we can help give advice, but this person had mentioned that they love to see the timber on the northeast side of the tim, cemetery opened up as part of the hunt, whether or not it's for archery or muzzleloader or one or both. If you're ever driven by the cemetery in the fall or early winter, you know how many deer that are piled in that area. And that's definitely an area of, of concern and that's where they're going to hold up, I guess, if you can. So, that's something for the city council to kind of look at and I unfortunately forgot to bring a map tonight to kind of point exactly out where that's at, but if that's something that the city would be agreeable, we can easily enough tweak the map and encompass that as part of the, the city hunt as well. McKinley Park Acres is an area up along Lake Vermillion. That's not part of the hunt. The residents on that point didn't want to hunt up in that part of the, the city, so that's been excluded. Two years ago, we circled out an area around Golden Horizons, now the Vermillion Senior Living Center that they, they had issues with hunters around there, so we put kind of a protected area around there, so people aren't allowed to hunt within that as well, just as a little safety buffer. Otherwise, the rest of our comments were pretty positive. They had gotten back. People were pretty happy with the way the hunt goes. Most of them are the same people every single year that apply and mostly folks that live right in town or maybe as far as always, eely. So, just kind of summarizing the comments from those, pretty, you know, moderate to the average or so harvest in, in DNR's eyes, I guess. I think the biggest thing is Lake Vermillion froze up relatively early this year in late November and that's where a lot of these deer come from. They come off of the islands and the north shore of Lake Vermillion and that's when they really come into town. Most of the, the rest of the deer around here are just kind of scattered about, but most of these are more migratory type deer. Overall, it seems like the numbers have decreased over the eight or seven years of the hunt, which is kind of the, the big goal of the hunt. So, we're kind of doing what we're supposed to and if we stop doing it, say the city council doesn't want to have a deer hunt anymore, you're definitely going to see the numbers shoot right back up. The deer know that they're safe here. They've got gardens and plants and apple trees to munch on. So, we, you know, suggest that the, the city needs to keep the hunt going and, you know, that we're doing a favor to all of its residents by helping out. One other concern that we've, we've had and we've made it known to both food and fuel and to the Y stores, that we've, we've noticed that people, these hunts have a separate deer permit area number when they go to register deer that they've harvested. And we think a lot of people still use permit area 177, which is the bigger statewide permit area right here. So, we really make sure that the gas stations know where people register, that, make sure to ask people during these seasons if they were hunting in the Tower City hunt or if they were hunting, you know, outside of the city limits, because without those, we aren't able to track the harvest and we can't really make recommendations as far as what should we allow people to harvest the following year. So, registration is really important and deciphering whether they were in the city hunt or if they were just hunting elsewhere. And then there's some recommendations for this next, next year. We suggest that the, the city is agreeable to doing the hunt again next year and keeping the pressure on the herd. I've taken multiple damage complaints. One was a woman that lived on the corner, turned towards Hoodoo Point. She had all of her apple trees completely destroyed this fall and she wanted me to come and take all the deer away. And I said, you come to the city council meeting and let people know that you're not happy with the deer population and, but I've taken, I think, two other calls of people that are concerned and had damaged the property and hunting is our way of controlling them. Let's see. I had gotten a call also from Demetrius Bray, who's the new manager over at the Vermillion Senior Living Center and I've, unfortunately, they've changed management. It's been a single year, they had a new manager there, a little bit of corporation. And we've really struggled with them on putting, they, they like to feed deer out there and I, I've worked with them in the past, they get them to not feed till after the deer hunt, keep the deer moving about. Now, they're coming to us looking for us to buy them deer corn to feed the deer. I'm not going to do that, we're not agreeable to that, but this is when it pops up again on, you know, the city council can talk about. Hoyt Lakes and other cities around have done feeding bans and said, no, no deer feeding allowed at all. That's something that can be tabled and talked about. I do have a handout that just talks about the negative impacts of deer feeding and I'll just leave it for you guys to take a glance at anyways. But, I guess it's just always a, an area of contention on, you know, you got the people that like to feed the deer and see them and then the other people that don't like them in their gardens and they're wrecking their trees and rubbing up against the house and just a, a topic that should probably be brought back up and with council members changing, people's ideas and perceptions change, so just to keep it on people's radar. And then the final thing is, is before I had left, we were going to try and transition this administration of this hunt over to the city to be able to take on. And then I left and my supervisor just kind of took it back over, but we'd still like to completely hand it over to the city. It's relatively easy. It's a, you do a drawing in the fall to pick what hunters are in the, in the hunt and you send out a letter. That's really about all it is. You don't really field many calls. The hunt pretty much runs itself. But it's something I like to work with, whether it's Linda or someone with the city, to be able to say, here we go, I'm here to help answer questions or tweak a map or something like that, but just to get it off of our plates. We're down another staff member here that we're not getting back with DNR, so we're down to just technically two and a half instead of three and a half staff members out of Tower. And everyone's, time is precious and we're all busy, so all of the other cities around, Cook, Hoyt Lakes, Aurora hasn't got their hunt going, but pretty much all other cities, they run their hunts themselves and they don't have DNR administering them. The only reason that we were involved was because this was the first city hunt in northern Minnesota, so we kind of helped lead the way and kind of take the bow by the horns to teach everyone how to do it. And we figure after eight years, I think it's time to hand the reins off and say, all right, either you guys take it on or that's, that's about it. So, something, something else to discuss and, you know, I can come to another meeting too to, to talk about it further or maybe help, help transfer things over. That's, I'm more than willing to help out with that. And then on that topic too, on just having an orientation next year, the first year of the hunt, we had a hunt orientation with the fifteen or twenty hunters to just talk about ethics and no trespassing and asking for permission. And I think that kind of gets lost after so many years we get new hunters. So, I just think just having that as a requirement next year again, so whether it's us or the city kind of administering it, that'd be something that we'll want to grow back in next fall before the hunt starts and having an orientation, just a one-hour meeting, whether it's at our office or, you know, up here somewhere, just to have a map out, answer questions, have a conservation officer to talk about just ethics and tagging and kind of the, the basics. Besides that, does anyone have any questions?
If the city, I understand that you're looking for a decision as to whether the city would take this off the hands of the DNR. So, the orientation, presentation that you just talked about, that would still be done by DNR?
Correct, yeah, that could be, you know, the city could help some of the administration or, you know, admin type paper pushers and stuff, but for the logistical type questions and the law, law questions, would, we definitely have a warden and myself or Tom Rush, my supervisor, that would be here. And that's how we do it, that the same way at Hoyt Lakes and Cook. We always have a lot of staff there at the meeting to help just to keep it rolling along. And it's nothing real formal, it's, you know, pretty, pretty informal evening, just a one hour.
So, then, as I understand it, there's two questions that you have. Number one, are you looking for a resolution or a consensus from the city that we go ahead with the hunt this year?
Yeah, I think if, if we can do it tonight, just a yea or a nay on yes, we should have it in 2019 and then whether or not we'd be agreeable to taking over the administration of it. Like I said, it's not a big time commitment and I'm more than happy to sit down and I know.
We already did the, we've done, we already agreed to take it over.
Oh, yeah, two years ago and then Tom kind of took it back and I left because there was some confusion, so, yeah, if that's still capisce, I'm more than happy to come in after and sit down and hand over the documents.
Yeah, we were going to wonder what happened to you.
Yeah, yeah.
No, we know.
My current position was done, so there was some confusion in our office and I thought.
Since, excuse me, since this was a public presentation to the, the chamber audience as well, I built this up that if anybody has a comment or a question. Yeah, back this?
Pertaining to the airport, I'd like to see keep continuing the hunt because we're always dealing with airplane and deer hunt too.
And you guys, I think we've issued a shooting permit for the airport too, correct?
Yes.
For the.
That should come through St. Paul, which pretty much allows it.
Seagulls and geese, but not deer.
Not for deer, okay. And that's something I know that can be added if that's, that's an area of concern.
I think if you just keep on with the hunt that you're doing here with the city council, I think we're fine.
Go ahead.
Yep. Perfect. Yep. I'd just like to point out that you missed one and about an hour ago, it was ten feet in front of my picture window, about a half block that way. So, next year, if you could kind of help me out on that one, I appreciate it.
Unfortunately, me as a DNR employee can't hunt. Pass it along to our hunters. I know there's plenty around.
In all seriousness, part of why I was there is because I have a bird feeder, my friend here, but for the city council, I've been feeding birds for close to thirty years and I did not have a problem with the urban deer herd until neighbors just in this surrounding area started specifically feeding deer. So, I hope in the future it'll pick up that issue of feeding deer. I know there are worse one issues with it, but. I understand that's an issue. Okay, but good, good comments both. Is there, are there any other discussion or questions, comments? So, then, the, the first question would be to entertain a resolution to go ahead with the deer hunt in the timeframe that you decide?
We would keep the dates as the same, so it would start both the archery and muzzleloader hunt will both start Saturday after Thanksgiving, usually about the 23rd or 24th.
And Linda, the lottery, and I guess Jerry, you also mentioned that the lottery has been done by us in the past, so that that's a procedure that's well understood and.
That's, you did do that one this fall? Okay.
Maybe just a refresher.
Yeah, absolutely, that's.
Do you, do you get more hunters than, there's an exemona hunters or?
It's not many, like if we're a, have a handful of people over, but some years it's even, don't even fill all the slots.
That's the way it was last.
How many slots are there?
So, for the muzzleloader hunt, it was twenty and for the archery was ten. And I think muzzleloader didn't fill up all of them.
Okay.
And we handed off, the muzzleloader hunt, we had the city, that was what the city was going to administer. And the reason that we as DNR would still administer the archery hunt, which is 2988, just the ten hunters, is because it also includes the state park property. So, we just figured, logistically, we don't want the city to have to worry about managing or picking other things with the state park, so essentially just picking up the one hunt, twenty hunters.
Just curious, the, I didn't, you, you may have mentioned, I didn't catch it though, the meat, what the, what you produce from the hunt, where does that go? Does it go to?
Those are hunters. They, they tend to keep, just like the statewide deer hunt, they go to, go and purchase an, an over-the-counter deer license. They have to be selected for the lottery to be able to purchase those antlerless tags so they can. so they can, some guys that I've talked to, they'll go and buy all five antlerless tags before the season, preparing and assuming they're gonna shoot five and some will just, they'll buy one, go out, shoot an antlerless deer, go to the Y store, food and people buy another one and they'll just keep going back and forth.
Okay.
Yeah, they shoot it, tag it, register it and then it's, they, they can keep it for themselves or there is a donation program through the DNR, they can donate it or maybe there's a elderly person down the street that maybe is widowed that wants deer meat or something and they're free to do whatever they along with it.
Okay, moving on then, um, I, if there's, um, an objection, I think that we can, uh, have a motion for both, uh, questions. Uh, number one, do we have a deer hunt? Number two, is it administered by the city? Is there a motion to that effect?
I don't think you have to redo the motion, but the same you do it.
Two years ago or something.
It's more the motion for, I'll make a motion that we continue the hunt.
Okay. Second, okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, mine was an aye. Okay, um, good presentation, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, um, so number four, um, what's your pleasure regarding the mayor misconduct investigation? Do you want to put that off, um, until I have a printed copy for everyone or, um?
I guess I would like to have a printed copy, I think it'll be-
I would like to as well, just for clarity.
Because it's hard now.
Okay.
Because sometimes when you read, you read so fast, it's hard to, by any of us, you know what I mean?
I read slow. That's okay.
Yeah, you don't gotta read it in years like I do, so.
Um, and that's, that's fine with me. Is there a motion to table it?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I abstain, this for the sake of word. So the motion passed. Um, number five, the closed meeting, um, has been lined out, um, and will come in a future meeting. Uh, so we're going to go to number six, approved minutes from previous meetings and we have two previous, uh, meetings to, um, to approve. Uh, the first one is February eleventh, uh, twenty nineteen, uh, regular meeting of the city council. Um, the, um, so, um, I, I'll just make, uh, a comment that, uh, Mayor Kringssted dissented in, um, uh, the motion regarding misconduct allegations for obvious reasons. Um, and, um, the motion, uh, where is it here? To accept the minutes, um, I, in both cases, um, I as mayor dissented approval only because we did not have the minutes and time, uh, to review them appropriately and properly before the meeting and so there was really no way to, uh, judge whether there's any errors or not. And I just want to make that, that point, that's the reason that I dissented, uh, not necessarily because there was something wrong with the minutes. And, uh, Linda, I appreciate the, uh, minutes getting out, um, earlier. Um, that's, uh, a huge help, uh, to us to be able to review them, uh, a week before or two or several weeks before we actually have to approve them. So, uh, I appreciate that a great deal. Um, is there a motion to accept, uh, the February eleventh minutes? Or is there a support?
Support.
Any discussion or other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Here is unanimously. Uh, the second set of minutes are from the regularly scheduled meeting, uh, February twenty-fifth, twenty nineteen. Um, I have the same comments, um, that I made earlier. Um, and, um, has everyone had time to review those minutes? Is there a motion to accept? So moved. Is there support?
I'll break it in.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor of, um, approval of the February twenty-fifth, uh, twenty nineteen minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. Um, we have public input. Uh, does anyone have public input for this evening?
I wrote this down so I'd make sure I covered everything.
Okay.
I've attended the last four city council meetings in Tower and Head and I can say that I am concerned about the hostile environment on the council. It appears to me that the main reason for this animosity is the accusations launched by Councilor Kevin Fitten. At the latest February twenty-fifth meeting, Mr. Fitten said he was tired of the dragging out of the complaints against Mayor Kringssted. However, for three of those meetings in a row, it was upon Fitten's insistence that the meetings be closed to the public. This would cause the extended public grievance. After finding out a closed meeting was not correct procedure, Fitten then wanted an investigation and when that failed, asked for mediation. All of this was unnecessary. Fitten stated that the mayor of Tower spent a hundred and fifty dollars of city funds on League of City Newly Elected Officials Conference and had not notified the city clerk. After the mayor was made aware of this, he has gone through the correct channels. If Mr. Fitten had just talked to the mayor ahead of time, he would have discovered this as a non-issue. The councilmen then complained that information about a closed meeting was, quote, "by some means," unquote, "made public." This statement was not only vague, but it implied that the mayor shared the information. Without proof, this assumption should not be made or discussed at the meeting. Kevin could have resolved the rift by simply sitting down with Orland and discussing these complaints. So let's move forward to build a positive community that works together. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Uh, Marshall?
I also wrote on my call, I have a commentary. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I'm here to respond to the false allegations, uh, raised by Kevin Fitten, Linda Keith and Eric Scoob, that Mr. Kringssted released private data from a recent closed meeting that examined allegations of misconduct. Had Mr. Kringssted done what these, uh, three individuals allege, which I know for a fact he did not, the mayor would have acted in violation of state law. In other words, it's a serious charge to make, particularly on nothing more than supposition. All three made their false claims without having asked either Mr. Kringssted or myself for an explanation. Had they done so, they would have learned that this allegation is entirely false. I have been aware for more than six months that city officials falsified my term on Tida in order to remove me from the, from that authority in retaliation for critical reporting and editorialism. Mr. Fitten confirmed that motivation in his own comments on January twenty-eighth. This council should now be fully aware that my removal from Tida was done in violation of state law and given the falsification of records involved was very possibly a criminal act that this council has an obligation to take seriously. Shortly after his election, Mr. Kringssted requested a copy of the city's roster of committee and commission terms from the clerk treasurer. After reviewing it, he informed me that it showed my term on Tida had expired in twenty seventeen. Mr. Kringssted and I had previously discussed my removal from Tida and he wondered if perhaps my term had expired as some city officials had tried to claim at the time. I showed him the minutes from the twenty seventeen reorganization, which clearly showed my term continuing through the end of twenty nineteen. It was clear evidence of the falsification of official city records. And both Mr. Kringssted and I independently confirmed through comparing city minutes with the roster that the falsifications went well beyond Tida. The fact that I was aware of these falsifications months in advance of my reporting on them and months in advance of any closed session of the council that might have addressed them is easily and abundantly documented. Mr. Fitten and Mr. Scoob would have quickly uncovered this had they had an interest in learning the facts. But this entire falsehood has become the basis for a meritless grievance by the clerk treasurer is even more troubling. I attended last week's meeting of the grievance committee and was shocked by what I witnessed. Fortunately, Mr. Abrahamsen prevailed upon the committee to refrain from immediate action since it appeared that Mr. Altenberg and Brooke Anderson were ready to uphold the grievance without asking so much as a question. The very fact that Mr. Altenberg, who has filed his own frivolous action against the mayor, would even be allowed to vote on this grievance is astonishing in itself. As recently as December, Mr. Altenberg accused Mr. Kringssted and myself of corruption in a public meeting as part of an unhinged rant. Such a conflict would never be allowed in any kind of judicial proceeding because of the obvious bias that Mr. Altenberg has demonstrated. This council should at a minimum, appoint an unbiased individual to serve in Mr. Altenberg's place. What's more, given the documented facts of this case, which I am more than willing to make available to the city, the grievance should be immediately dismissed for the pleasures. It's a sham and nothing more.
Thank you, Marshall. Um, hopefully, um, these issues will be put to bed soon and we can go on with, um, uh, the normal city business of progressing and, uh, and having, uh, well, progressive economic development and, um, uh, new development, uh, in general in the city of Tower. Steve, did you have?
Yeah, well, I agree a hundred percent with that and, uh, I didn't write anything down, but, uh, I just wanted to, uh, comment on the original complaint against you because I'm puzzled by, um, why you, Kevin, saw that that had enough merit in it to bring it forward. As I understand, what happened was that, um, Orland was alleged to have said that Steve was a sexist and that was communicated to, um, you and you brought the complaint forward. I could understand why Steve would be offended if he thought that comment was made. I don't understand why that would be city's business because the comment was made as a private citizen in private media, but also because I fail to see how that could create an adverse working environment or hostile work environment. Because being a sexist is not a fireable offense. And I don't, nobody that I know has said that Orland said he's a sexist, therefore we're going to take some action against him. Being a sexist could be a fireable offense if it has to do with harassment, abuse, discrimination or assault. But normally when someone says someone is sexist, they're talking about they don't have an equal division of the duties in home. Um, one spouse doesn't do as much parenting the other, as much cooking, um, believes that there's, you know, men sugar more than women or that boys should, little boys should be dressed in blue and little girls dressed in pink. None of these are fireable offenses, but they all fit the definition of sexist. So, uh, I just don't see why that was, that complaint had enough merit to bring it forward. And following up on what, uh, Marshall said about Steve perhaps having a vendetta, Steve, right out there, uh, when the first meeting that I attended, uh, where the complaint was brought forward, you said to me at the close of our conversation, because I confronted you on, on your complaint, and you said, "The mayor is going down, we're gonna get rid of him." And I want to emphasize the "we" in that. Thank you for your time.
Um, thank you very much. Is there any other public input?
There is. That last comment is completely, you can say that, I never said that. And we were talking as two citizens when, when we were talking, because this was after the meeting, but I never said anything like that. That is ridiculous. So to just stand here and publicly say stuff like that is... You, you have any evidence of that? I mean, we can just throw accusations like that all around all the, all day long. You really shouldn't be prepared to prove something like that if you're gonna state it in a public meeting.
Uh, I feel like I can respond to that. Um, I think the people that know me know that I would not make up something like that. I also contemporaneously relayed the facts of that conversation and those specific two sentences you said to people right after the meeting. So if I was thinking to make up something like that, I sure did replant it. And again, um, I guess I'll put my word against your word anytime, Steve. I'm sorry it's come to this because you clearly said that and now you're lying to the council.
No, okay, that, Steve, that's, uh, yeah, we need to move on, but-
He in fact accused me of lying, so, thank you.
Yeah. Uh, and as I said, I, I don't want to create debate during public input, that's not the purpose for it, um, uh, but I appreciate, um, people standing up and, and giving their, their thoughts and, and opinions. Uh, you have a right to do so. Um, if there's no other public opinion, uh, we will move on to reports from officers, engineers, commissions and committees. Um, SDA engineering report, Jason?
Um, you should have your report in our packets. Um, I don't believe I have anything to add at this time. Um, open to questions. We have a couple items in here that are, um, part of new business as well.
Looking for eight point one, Linda, is-
It's messy.
Is that the three point? I think it's three point.
Okay. It looked like age seventy-five. Sorry about that. Um, okay. Uh, does anyone have any questions here? I haven't had a time, a chance to, to read through this. Um, I am, I am curious though, um, I'm, I'm not in the loop any longer, but I'm, I'm curious, um, if you can say something as to, uh, the, the final plat registration with the county?
Mm-hmm. There's a update right here under plaques, under the harbor. Um, there's a meeting between SDA and the county on the twentieth, agreed upon the final changes of the plaques. Um, it has been resubmitted for approval. Um, there are three items, we're working with Linda for obtaining and, um, that will need to be, uh, provided to the county prior to the plat being signed and that's, um, uh, what do we have here? Uh, information on the vacated DNR usement, the, uh, verification letter from, with Department Administration for the, um, change of the city limits and, uh, letters from the lenders.
Uh, what, what is the actual timeline? Um, I, SDA met, met with St. Louis County on, uh, February twentieth and agreed on recall final changes. Uh, what, um, um, what, what information are you still waiting?
We've resubmitted the plat. So it's in the county's hands for review. Um, so the, it can vary, it's, it's gone through the review once already and, um, uh, hopefully sooner than later we'll receive it. It is an extremely complex plat and I think the, uh, the county surveyor's office will tell you that. And, um, but I think, uh, we can, uh, follow up for a, uh, a timeline of when they'll respond.
Okay. If you want to make a decision, the, the three items that we need to provide are what again?
It's the vacation of the easement by the DNR, the one that went north south across-
You have that on your somewhere?
No, but I know what they are. And the other two are, uh, statements from Branson regarding the loan that's on the charter school.
Okay.
And the loan that is on, um, the new land of Irving.
Okay. And those are questions that you're, um, you're replying to?
Yep.
Okay. Um, and, and those will be to, they will be answered when?
I'm waiting on the, on the DNR and the state for both of them, or for, on the, uh, I triple R B one as well as Branson, I don't know what their timeframes are. The DNR one, we've been waiting for quite a while, so.
Um, would you mind, um, getting answers from those entities and, uh, just pass it on to the council, what, um, what the timeline is? Um, and, uh, and I might mention that I'm concerned about that, uh, from, uh, the city council, the city's point of view, my, the mayor's point of view, uh, it's a project that, uh, has been receiving a lot of visibility, of course, for a long time and, um, I, I want to make sure that, um, we do our due diligence from the city side to make sure that, um, there is no, uh, delay coming from us. Um, there's been a lot of this with, um, the, the, the county and SDA and, uh, waiting for information, so we'd like to move that along as quickly as possible. Um, we still get asked about it quite frequently. Uh, are there any other questions, uh, for Jason regarding the SDA support? Um, I believe that it's customary to approve all of the reports at the same time, uh, so we'll move on to the ambulance director report.
Nothing out of the ordinary to report there. Um, February is a little busier than usual. Nothing out of the ordinary to report there. February was a little busier than usual. We had a lot of nine-one-one medical calls in February, more than we would have expected, but that's the way it is.
Okay. At, those of you who are here, and certainly the city council recalls that that at the last meeting, I requested that we have a walkthrough of the ambulance and fire department, and Steve, very willingly, professional, when he did that, Rachel, counselor Rachel, Rachel and I spent, what, forty-five minutes, an hour with you, Steve?
Roughly.
Good presentation. So I certainly have a better understanding of the, some of the challenge, space challenges and the other things that that you have, and I have no question about the level of expertise that you lend to the city with your long experience. So thank you very much. I appreciate that. The, on the ambulance director report, can you tell us when the ambulance that's currently under order, when, what's the timeline there? When will that be delivered?
I checked up on that actually last week, just because I was curious myself. The timeline is gonna get stretched out longer. The chassis is just being built. That's a GM thing. There was shortage on axles, and I don't know what that, there's, you know, because I had him call to check to see when it was actually gonna be delivered, because it was ordered towards the end of February, so I was kind of expecting it would have been delivered to the four-wheel-drive office by now, so then it will be delivered. Unfortunately, the people that put on the four-wheel drive are also extremely booked up. They may not get to getting it until June. Which means then it would be delivered to the actual ambulance manufacturer and take approximately two months to build the ambulance. So that's the timeline we're currently looking at. That's the update.
My next question, I'm not, I probably should direct it both to Linda and to clerk treasurer and you. What is the schedule of payment for the ambulance?
So when the chassis is done, GM will send the bill to the ambulance builder, and they will forward that to us, and then the city would pay for the chassis. And then, when the four-wheel drive is done, that bill would get sent to the city and then they pay. And then the ambulance would get built. It would get inspected ahead of time. They would finish it up, and then it would be delivered or picked up, and they would send the bill for the balance then to the city.
Was there a deposit? No deposit on this at all? So the full, what's the full price of the ambulance?
It was, we're forty-nine or something, because I can't remember what those changes were.
Two forty-nine?
Two forty and two forty-nine, yeah.
Okay.
Well, that's not all for the ambulance that I should say, because we had the new cot put in it, so it will have it, it will come with that. That's not part of the ambulance. That nineteen thousand is, the ambulance pays for that, but it was included in that price.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Steve. And Steve Alden, our fire chief report?
Nothing exciting in February in fire. Just one snowmobile accident that we assisted with, which is pretty good for us. There was lots of snowmobile accidents this winter, given the good conditions, but in our coverage area, only one so far, so.
Okay, good. Are there any questions for the ambulance director, fire chief? Okay. Moving on to the police report. Jason, will you be doing the report?
I'm here. I'm in the living room. I don't see them. February's slow. It's cold. Most roads are a bit icy sometimes, so no one's speeding. Citations are down. People have been staying in the house. They're not out doing bad things, so. Quiet.
For us. You know, I'll remind you that I think I mentioned this, both you and Dan, that we're going to want, especially the newest council members, are gonna want a walkthrough. I was there briefly and walked through with Dan, and that was like about ten minutes, but I didn't, I came unannounced, and I didn't have a lot of questions already, so we'll come back to you on that. As I said, the tour that we had with the ambulance director, fire chief was very helpful, and I'm sure it would be for conversation with you as well.
Yes, let's go.
Now, does anyone have any questions for Jason? Okay, for Tita, eight point five.
They haven't met, but they plan to meet on fourth ward.
Okay, on Thursday. Oh, in April. Okay, so other than that, no report? Airport commissioner report?
I don't think we've met, or yeah, we did meet since the last meeting.
I guess currently we're working on the handicap guideline for the long building dollar, eighty billion dollar, and trying to get that going. We did start on it this summer with technically being the carpenter for the ramp there, so we're working guidelines for that with. We've also been meeting on the storage billing for the snowboard, looking at pricing and working with S.H. on that. Just want to remind everybody, first weekend in May, we're gonna have Rick's tree service coming in, and we're gonna be working on those Norway trees by the beach there. Trying to cut some of the tops off up there, and we're trying to make it more presentable and not just flat across there, so that'll be going on in, I think, first weekend in May or...
They're in that flight path?
Yeah.
Again?
Yes.
I think we trimmed that one time in the past, too?
Right, and that's why we've got some state representatives coming to tell us how low we can go, rather than pat them all the way down, but so we're working there. And that's funded already, great for the state there. And then, your new guy Ben was on, he was a snowboarder at the runway today, so he's been on this, doing a nice job, so we'll keep up the good work.
Yeah, I heard that he's doing a good job.
Yep.
Learning, but doing a good job.
He didn't blow in front of my hanger, but that's okay. I thought I got it.
Okay, all right. Thanks a lot, John. Okay. Well, any questions regarding the airport commission report? Grievance committee, eight point seven.
There was two meetings. One, the first one on February twenty-fifth, and you can see that, what we had discussed there. Out of that first meeting, we had recommended that the city take a look at Article ten, step one of the employee contract before we did anything else. The first thing that we had talked about, and I had sent that update, or I had, actually had Terry send it to all the council members, that although there's no requirement to have any official steps, we're recommending that, and that's later on the agenda, that official steps for meetings, grievance meetings, which deal with hearing grievances, be adopted for us. That way, every grievance is treated equally, and nothing is overlooked. Without it, without a written, painless steps to go by, you could easily misstep and do something that you forget to give somebody an opportunity. So that was that meeting. And then there was a meeting on March fifth, in which we actually did listen to the grievance. It was a completely professional meeting. There is video of that meeting. If the city wishes to post it, they can. Otherwise, I will give it to others to post. I don't know how, there was no rushing or anything. We were actually reconvening on the fourteenth to finish giving the parties involved, and there are only two parties involved, to have their say or submit information. And then we will continue that grievance from there. But if there's a question about the meeting, I would suggest the city post it. This video is quite clear.
Okay, quite clear, and the city attorney had made a declaration that the grievance committee could be open.
That, for that meeting, correct.
Yeah. And, you know, and I can disclose that I was there, but I kept my zip, my lips zipped the whole time, so that we didn't have any issues with form. Is there anything that is outstanding, a reply from me or anyone else regarding the grievance? Or is the response to be coming from you, and do you need anything from me?
There are two involved individuals in that grievance. One of them being the City of Tower, which there are five members. As of yet, the City of Tower has submitted nothing orally or in writing to disagree with the grievance. That is where it lies. So the fourteenth, we are reconvening to finish that step of hearing people's sides and looking at submitted evidence that would be contrary, you know, show that the grievance is not correct. If the city wishes to submit something, or the individuals, because there's five individuals involved, so that would be the opportunity to do that. Which is why I had actually asked for all the council members to be at that meeting in case there was any questions that need to be asked of the individuals.
I can't speak for the other four counselors at the table here, but I didn't realize, it sort of went over my head, or I missed it, that we were all invited to be at that meeting. Is that what you just said?
Yeah, that, did that, did that not get? Yeah. I'd asked the deputy clerk to send a notice to all the five members of the council, asking to be at that grievance committee meeting, being that all five members as the City of Tower are involved in the grievance. And the other party being involved being the clerk treasurer.
Can I ask, was that understood by the other members here?
I'm on the committee, so.
Yeah, you were on the committee, of course.
Brooklyn is also on the committee, so.
Okay. Just for the record, I did reply in two official letters, one to the law firm of the Keentown Union three twenty, and I sent a letter of reply to Mr. Scoob.
Those were, those were given to me. I asked for any, I'd asked for any relevant information to that grievance, and those letters were provided to the three grievance committee members.
Okay.
So they, we have that, but wait for the...
Excuse me, but you're still waiting for a further reply from us for...
Yes, that we, if somebody's going to show up or submit something, they need to do that by the fourteenth. We have a timeframe. We have to, we have to make a decision and have that in writing by the nineteenth. And there's a weekend in between there, so that's why we're convening, reconvening on the fourteenth.
Well, I have a response prepared, and I can pass that on to either the clerk treasurer or deputy clerk and and have them pass it on to the committee.
I would suggest working through the deputy clerk, as is the six people that are normally around that table.
Understood. So I will, I will do that. Okay, any questions regarding grievance committee? Okay. I entertain a motion to accept the reports from officers, engineers, commissions, and committees.
A move?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. Unfinished business, number nine, nine point one, grievance policy. Linda?
There's a copy of the policy in your packet. This is what the G D S folks want. These are some guidance and steps to make sure that everything is covered, and I believe these were handed ahead to Peter Sam as well at one of the meetings, but it was the first one. And I think he thought they were pretty void and pretty normal.
Could have something that we want to modify later, we kind of...
Oh, yeah, you could change that. This would just assure that every grievance is treated equally.
When was this handed out?
At the March, or February twenty-fifth meeting.
Okay, was it in the packet? Do you recall receiving it?
I don't recall.
What packet?
Kevin, do you recall receiving this?
Oh, no, 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 the February twenty-fifth grievance committee meeting. We...
Yeah, that'd be the one, yeah.
That's where we asked to send it to the council, for the council to approve.
Okay, but I haven't seen this come through. Has it been sent?
These were sent out, right? Did you send these out, too?
Somebody wanted to read it, look it up.
Quite frankly, I haven't, I haven't seen this before, so...
These ones? Not these, these actions to deal with the workplace grievance?
Yeah, we need to table that, because I...
As I said, there's no, there's no law saying we have to have these steps written down. It would just be nice to go have a guideline.
They were forwarded to you from Steve through Terry over two weeks ago.
To all the council members?
She don't remember that, she don't remember seeing those. Maybe we got it now, and we can move on, but if you want to read, we'll just table this and then sound like that's what they want, so they have a chance to look at it. Do you want to add something, or whatever?
So the grievance policy then shall be tabled until the next meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, Robert's rules. Do we need to have a motion? I think we need to have a motion. Everyone agrees. Okay, it's consensus. We will table that until the second meeting of March. Nine point two, Board of Appeal and Equalization.
At the last meeting, I mentioned to you that the Board of Appeal was scheduled for five, seven, from four to five, and that presented problems for quite a few of your schedules. They have now moved it back to six to seven.
That's good, better thing.
I don't think we're gonna be able to...
For people to...
Yeah, I don't know how they thought work people would get here, but some of them are in the middle of the day, so I guess it's up to you to take time off, or... But so, Mark, everybody's down there, maybe seven.
And where do they meet?
Here.
They're here, okay. Oh, City Hall, okay. So that's... So that's just informational. There's nothing to make a reservation? So number ten, new business, established temporary data practices officer.
We have a data practices request that's in your packet that involves me and the attorney, except I should not be going to answer it. Normally, he would have had to go to my backup, which is Terry, which he was a part of in the meeting, and then the second person would be the mayor, and you said you should not answer this as well.
That I should not answer it?
You should not answer it. It should be another member of the council. I don't know who you want to delegate it to, but...
Well, I guess I would delegate it to the acting mayor.
Considering the fact of how anything I say always ends up treating with suspicion, I would choose a neutral member of the council.
So this person, what would their duty be?
You would just have to answer this request. You wouldn't have to, any other request that doesn't involve me, and I'm capable of answering myself.
If somebody wanted a public data, this person would come in. How did that data make copies and order to those people?
Right.
Okay. So if either of you can't be involved, how does one go about looking for that data, or is that okay, that to Terry or somebody?
I think we're gonna have to assist you, but when you push it out, you're putting your...
My John Hancock.
Yeah, that you've agreed to that being the data. Yeah, that you've agreed to that being the data. Are you volunteering?
It looks like it's gonna be me, huh?
I'm sure that you can get guidance from the LMC.
Yeah, I guess you can make me the, and then if I need some advice, I will expect help for that, so.
Thank you, Steve.
Yeah, I don't like thinking on people or not, seriously. Yeah, murmur that.
I, I will.
So do we have any?
Okay.
Yeah, so if you can come up when you have time, we'll go over the part grievance.
Do you want a separate motion on that or are we okay with?
We should make one to your establishment.
Is there a, is there a motion that the temporary data practices officer is Steve Abramson? Is there a second? Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
It's just temporary.
The LNC Enterprises, heat of buildings, pay estimate, number eight.
We have a pay estimate in your packet of thirty thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars. S H, I put this over and give them their C L O approval.
Is there a motion to accept? A move? A second? Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. TNT aggregates pay estimate, number four.
Their current, their pay estimate that's in effect is for a thirty-nine thousand nine hundred dollars. This would be for the church.
What is that, for, for the product that they're doing?
They're just about down to the end of their money, so I don't know what the plan is, but that's where they're at.
Now, this isn't one that S H's oversight sees, so did their person say yes?
Yeah, they have, yeah, I looked them over.
Oh, is it the?
The old church, yeah.
Yeah.
So we're just the financial agent on this one?
Okay, is there a motion to approve?
A move.
Second? Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Unanimous. Ten point four, public input policy.
At the last meeting, Rachel asked if I prepare a public input policy. I think this kind of goes with the spirit of everything that you guys had sort of mentioned that night. And tonight. I don't know if you want to take it home and read it.
Yeah, I'd like to do it, yeah.
Okay, I will dial it ahead till three twenty-five. I said I would dial it ahead till three twenty-five.
Okay, great. Ten point five, part-time maintenance worker wage rate.
Yes, I would like to increase the wage rate for our maintenance worker. He currently makes eleven dollars an hour. And I'd like to move it up to eleven fifty. And he's been at eleven for two years straight now. We've given him some increased work. We haven't had any issues with, with attendance or anything with him as an employee at all, so.
Is, is the rate increase, is that based on, on anything like cost of living or is it?
No, it was based on cost of living. I think he would actually get more than that. It's just, it's been stagnant. We were looking at it. It's been a hard winter for everybody. We are stuck in our contracts we're ever at, but it seemed like he was sort of forgotten, and so. I think the consensus of the group, the maintenance group, and myself, was that it was time to look at it.
Part-time, what does part-time mean? How many hours per week or per month?
Um, it is, it varies. He gets a lot of hours. It's winter with all the snow that we've had. When mowing season hits, you'll see him mowing the mower. Sometimes a lot, depends on how radiated, depends on how dry.
Is he the one that does this fumblower thing on the sidewalks too?
Uh, yep, he's, he does do that as well. Couple of the, Dave and Tom jump in there too, but Adam does it as well.
So the, the current rate was what?
Eleven.
Oh, okay.
So basically going up.
Fifty cents. I do have room in the budget under his pay lines. That's not an issue.
But is that, that part-time that varies from year to year and depending on driving this and snow and all that, okay?
And he's been very conscientious of those hours compared to a couple of the people that. It seems like their hours were a lot higher, so.
And the part-time worker has to stay on this certain amount of hours?
Yeah, I don't think on average, I want to say, I feel like we just calculated this was about twenty-one hours a week.
I know there's a, you gotta be careful with that, okay?
So we're looking at ten fifty a week increase?
Something like that, yeah.
Yeah, I have no problem with the wage increase. I just want to make sure that it's, it's a fair increase. How long has it been since there've been, been an increase?
Two years.
That helps track people, the new thing.
He sort of gets forgotten about because he's not a contract employee. And he doesn't come up on any of the other schedules, so we've kind of looked him over, but we were just sitting down after the long winter, which we hope is over, and are trying to, you know, kind of look at our staff and what things.
Is that, is that a recommendation that comes from you there or do you have a, is that like employee relations or?
That's coming from me and from the maintenance team. I should say the former, former team, because Dave is no longer here with us, but.
Okay, so I just want to make sure we're not shortchanging if it's been two years, but, but if.
I'm sure he'd love more, but I, budget wise, I only feel I'm prepared with.
Okay, so is there a motion to that effect?
I'll make that a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Do you want to read the, the, the motion?
The motion would be to change the part-time maintenance worker wage rate from eleven to eleven fifty per hour.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That was an aye from me. Okay, ten point six, twenty eighteen fund balance transfers.
After every audit, the auditor and I sit down and we look at kind of where we are with the typical funds. Most respectively, the general fund and then our unfunded debt. I've given you two options. I kind of gave you twenty sixteen and twenty seventeen, so you can see since you're all separate, kind of barely know at what, how we do this. So you can see what we did in sixteen and seventeen, and then I've given you two proposals for eighteen. And one would be to pay off the North Second and North Third Water Sewer Project. And very little on the other two projects. And then the other one would actually be to pay off the Main Street, which is the lower of the debts, but the smaller, and then kind of take the chunk, the chunk of each of the others. So in seventeen or sixteen, I mean, you can see that we transferred out forty thousand, we split that. We actually put ten thousand back into Hulu. The fund had gone negative at the time, so we put ten back in and then fifteen towards those two unfunded debt projects. In seventeen, we were only able to pull twenty from the general fund. And as you can see, we put eighteen towards the one project and then two towards the other. And then on the bottom, I'm not sure entirely how much you want to pull out of the general fund, if you want to go with the one twenty-five or the one hundred. The North Second, North Third is the oldest of the two, of the three debts.
So just to, to get this straight, I don't, maybe you're, the others here are ahead of me, but the, for two thousand nineteen, the general fund that we're talking about, that is, that's available? Is how much?
For twen- the end of twenty eighteen is a hundred eighty-nine thousand three hundred and forty-six cents.
Okay, and, and are you making a recommendation?
Yes, I, well, I, I'm giving you, I'm giving you two recommendations and I guess I'm.
Option A and option B.
Right.
Okay, did, so does this mean two thousand nineteen fund balance transfers?
No. Those are two thousand eighteen, because we just finished twenty eighteen.
Okay.
So like, is this something that the auditor hopes to explore it? It's something that.
They can't have any input into this.
Right, okay.
Do you think when he comes, when he comes to talk about the, he'll, they'll, they make recommendations and then that's depending if he had questions for that, they'll tell you, oh, you think you should do this or do that, or kind of things, so.
Are there pros and cons to each of these that you kind of see?
Well, on your, on your option A, you are taking more out of the general fund, you're really seeing, you're reducing it down to a smaller balance. Although you do have unfunded debt, so I guess you're paying for it in a way anyway. You, the auditors, the one thing they will tell you is that you need to make an attempt to do something with your unfunded debt.
Right.
So to just say, we're not going to do an A or B, I don't really think is, they would tell you that. As far as how much to take or what your comfort level is, they won't hit in on that. Last year, we went down to a thousand dollars. I don't know that, I'm, I don't know if I'd go that low again. We made, we made it through just finding we actually bounced back like extremely well. We went from a thousand to a hundred eighty-nine thousand, so we, we came back very strong, but that's an awful lot to take. And, and it doesn't, I guess if you went down to a thousand again, you probably would have just short enough to clear out the two debts and not the harbor debt. You won't be able to clear that out. That was my general fund. Both options give you, you're working at it in some capacity.
Okay.
What else would be your pros and cons?
So it, it's, it's just a little hard to read, but the, the N transfers, the number there is, one is four sixty-nine, one eighty-two, the other one is four twenty-five, four sixty-two. And, and those refer to harbor unfunded debt fund. So there's, there's three lines there that describe what that four twenty-five or that four sixty-nine is?
The four twenty-five, the four sixty-nine would be prior to year end, any, or at the year end, any transfers. So if you took the threes, twelve, seventeen, and option A, then it would reduce the harbor unfunded debt to four sixty-eight, eight seventy. If you went with option B, it, oh, I see I have a mistake there. It should be four sixty-nine, one eighty-two, thirty-five, minus the eighteen thousand.
So the four twenty-five?
Is not correct. It should be four sixty-nine or one eighty-two, thirty-five.
Okay, so the, tell me exactly how this works. So we're looking at doing fund balance transfers. And the money comes out of the, the general fund, so the, the general fund is cash in the bank?
No, the general fund is your, is your general fund, I don't know how to explain. You have, you have your general fund, which for the City of Tower is everything but Hulu operations, the airport operations. The ambulance is its own fund. Your general fund is your city staff, your city hall, your city clerk's office. The fire department is general fund, cemetery depot, civic center, garbage.
But does that refer to cash on hand?
No, it has nothing to do with cash. Your general fund is a fund of your, of your city's funds. I think we have about fourteen different funds between debt and our unfunded debt and then our active funds. You wouldn't transfer out of your airport fund to your unfunded debt, because it doesn't, this isn't airport debt. If we had airport debt, then it wouldn't, then I would recommend that, but this is just out of your general.
So what is the purpose of doing the fund balance transfer?
That you're, you're trying to reduce your debt.
Okay, and so this is from kind of blood over from the twenty eighteen?
Yep.
Budget then?
Yeah, and, and from other years. This is built up. Yeah, the, the harbor. I know a bulk of it came in just probably, it had to be just taken over as clerk, so probably I guess twenty thirteen, twenty twelve. There was a payback of two hundred and seventy-five thousand that everybody sort of had forgot about, so that increased the debt greatly. And then the North Second, North Third Project, those were done in two thousand ten, eleven, and some went, finished in twelve. So that's how that is, and then the Main Street project was done in twenty thirteen.
But this is essentially, this is a transfer of internal funds?
Right.
Okay, so the, the, the transfer of funds would go to pay off, for example, if it was the Second slash North Third Street Water Sewer Project. That's a hundred and twenty-four thousand, and, and the transfer would be in option B, a hundred and six thousand, three seventy-sixty-nine?
Uh, no, that's what if you, in option B, if you took a hundred thousand dollars out of the general fund and you split it across those three unfunded debts. I'm saying you could, you could wipe away the Main Street project in its entirety, entirety, excuse me. And then add an equal share to the other two unfunded debt funds, which would leave you about eighteen, that eighteen thousand I have there. So then after those transfers were made, you would have eighty-nine thousand dollars in your general fund. Your harbor debt would be four hundred and fifty thousand and some change. Your North Second, North Third would be a hundred and six and some change, and you would no longer be carrying any Main Street sewer debt. If you went with option A, you would have only sixty-four thousand in your general fund. You would have four hundred and sixty-eight thousand and change on your harbor unfunded debt. You would have no North Second and North Third water sewer debt anymore, and you would still be carrying sixty-three thousand on your Main Street.
I, I don't want to sound obtuse, but is the, the, the original loan that is being paid, or the debt that's being paid back, that came internal, from somewhere internal to the city?
In the sewer.
Yeah.
Could have been from bonds.
Or was that a bonding?
This would have been project overruns.
Yeah.
That we did not have a funding source to pay for.
So the money originally then came from where?
Out of the general fund. We've been floating a loan to the water sewer fund this whole time.
Okay. Okay, and do you have a, a recommendation for, between option A and option B? Maybe I should first ask if there's any other questions about the two options and a, and a preference, Kevin?
Well, and Linda asked me a little bit about this earlier last week, and I kind of said, you know, we want to see, we want to try to eliminate at least one of these off the books, so that it's one less debt fund sitting there. So instead of three, you're getting it down to two either way. So I was kind of in favor of option A, because it gets a bigger piece of the debt off. Really, the only trade-off here is whether or not you want an extra twenty-five thousand dollars to go towards paying down debt or twenty-five thousand dollars staying in the fund.
And pay for.
Correct. Is there going to be another Main Street, Main Street sewer break? Is there going to be another?
Right.
So you're really kind of guessing, what kind of year do you think we're going to have in twenty nineteen?
Yeah, it's been.
I was kind of in favor about A, because it's better for us to pay down things as much as we can.
There would be less, there would be less left if you had a major issue or something.
By twenty-five thousand.
Yeah. Is there, is there a cash flow, do you have a cash flow forecast for, like, where we are today and what the cash flow is going to be over, say, the next six months?
Years where the.
No forecast.
Sewer links for you.
The thing I can speak to on that is that you have your budgeting, which is what you estimate you're going to spend in a year. But it's still just an estimate, and so until the end of the year, you really don't truly know where you're at until your audited amounts come in. And so this is why there is this amount in there, is because once you finally crunch everything down and the auditors go, okay, well, this is how much you have in this, and this is how much you have in this, and so on and so on. You don't truly know off of a budget. You got a rough idea, you can. you don't truly know off of a budget, you got a rough idea, you can be within the ballpark, but, um, that audited number is really kind of the actual, you know, and it does take a couple of months to get that, because, you know, obviously, you know, it's harsh. Um, so, uh, at least in that regard, um, you know, there, there's our budget for twenty nineteen, which is, has all the things that we have expected what we think is going to happen, and then there's that, was it fifty thousand? Fifty thousand was contingency this year? So there was fifty thousand contingency already built into the budget this year, that we've already started spending some things on. So, right now in the budget, there's about forty and change approximately.
Pretty close to forty.
Um, that is still sitting there in case, like, a sewer break happens, or a, you know, one of those unforeseenable things.
Mm-hmm.
Um, now, if we were to exceed that, then we would have to start wondering about the balance of, you know, 'cause then that would start going into that sixty-four or any, any portion. Um, so really, it does come down to the question of what kind of year do you think we're gonna have? Do you think there's gonna be something where we have a lot of emergencies happen that were unforeseen, or?
In fact, I guess historically, because of the frosts, and the way that everything's moving this year, it's like, boy, those tended to be the years where we had a lot of issues with water, especially on Main Street at one time, you know, but that's always been palmed it down, so, I don't know.
Well, I would say, you know.
Water line, so whether it's, you know, just like, well, the.
Um, I'm, I'm always for, you know, chipping away at a debt, and if you get it out the way, then you have one less to, uh, to worry about, but at the same time, I, I kind of hear what you're saying, Steve, that I'm, um, uh, I probably lean toward the conservative ad, eh, end, and, and make sure that, uh, we're not shorting at some point here in the spring.
Can you, can you apply that? Let's forget, can you, you know, say we went with, uh, whatever, you had a little extra money, and towards the end of the year, if you're gonna get through here, can you, you know, allocate that money towards the debt, or you?
That's kind of where we're at now.
The most you could do is, yeah.
That is this meeting.
Yeah, okay.
We have to wait until nine, or, or twenty.
I don't have to go, I can go.
So, if you kind of think of all, if you think of all the different budget lines in the budget, as you go through the year, you got utilities and all the other stuff, when you hit the end of the year, that's when anything that's left over filters down to, and that's this amount, that's what, the hundred and eighty, what did you say, hundred and eighty?
Eighty-nine thousand.
Eighty-nine.
You, you know, I think, I don't know, if you foresee anything with that, you know, or?
If I had a crystal ball.
Yeah, well, you know, I, I just.
Um, uh.
Yes, no one knows for sure, but it's just.
I guess I.
With you, I'm getting the debt, I'm going ahead.
I guess if I were one of you, I'd go with the hundred, 'cause there's no crime in, in, uh, in going a little conservative, you know, I don't know, you could ever be burned by that.
Right.
Whereas the other way, maybe isn't quite so cautious, but, and you could end up in a problem, or?
Well, what, what are the large expenses that are coming up that you, that we do know of?
Uh, we have the Pine Street other project, the ambulance that Director Altenberg is purchasing, um.
The ambulance fund, is that, um, is that, is that funding set aside? Is there?
Well, that's where it gets complicated, there's subsidy money that is specifically set aside for purchasing ambulances. That is roughly a hundred and fifty-three thousand or something like that, I, I don't remember the guy, it's around that number somewhere.
Does that include the one forty, or is a one forty for the, the insurance for the building?
No, that can only be spent on a new structure. Um, so the difference for the ambulance has to come out of the ambulance fund. The unfunded debt that you see on the paper has also much of that being covered by the ambulance fund. The money had to come from somewhere, you asked earlier?
Mm-hmm.
That's where it came from, the ambulance has been covering it. So it's, it is, it is, it is, you know, a little fate.
So the ambulance fund now, uh, the actual cash, I mean, the, the, the fund balance is, is, is higher than eight hundred something, eight eighty-nine or something, but, uh, but the actual cash?
Would not actually, it's there on paper, but the, it, the, it's, it has actually had to be, some of it physically spent to cover this unfunded debt. This, this is, this is what I was warning about before.
It's kind of like a zero interest loan.
Exactly, it's a benefit to the city to be able to have that, but at some point, you have to pay, start paying it back, otherwise you're gonna bankrupt both funds.
Are we gonna pay it back?
Uh, kind of like what I think what you're doing right now with all these funds, that, that were, you're, you're, you knock them down every year with, if you have available funds, and then that's why, like, the decision that you're being asked to make now.
Some of this, that were, this hundred thousand, or the, you know, you know, whatever it turns out to be, is some of that going back to the ambulance fund then, so do we have what we need for the ambulance when it comes in, or?
In, in a roundabout, yes, yes, it will.
The mo- the money doesn't physically get moved, it's there on paper, so as long as you have the money to cover it, it would be subtracted from the ambulance fund, but it, it's not like there's actually separate drawers of money.
Mm-hmm.
It just, it's separated on paper.
I'm pretty sure your auditors are gonna tell you that you're at a crossroads with the harbor project, and you're gonna have to look at levy and to take care of the debt there. There is no way that the general fund is gonna clear a four hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollar debt. And, and, you know, in our original, in our initial talks that we have, it's, it's pretty much their consensus that raising the levy to cover that debt, or at least you're marking some levy increase throughout the winter.
Uh, so the, um, uh, well, that's the largest fund, um, the harbor debt, um, i- is that, do you, do you have, let's see, in, um, in two thousand sixteen, it was three ninety-one, then it went to four twenty-five, and now it's four sixty-nine? Is that, am I getting that right?
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So in the last year, then it went up, um, forty, forty-five thousand? Okay, um, this is something that, uh, you need a decision on tonight, because the, the information needs to go to the auditors.
Correct.
Um, I, I, you know, I, I, I go with the conservative route, um, is my, my suggestion, are there other comments?
I, I would go with, you know, I'm actually not, uh, conservative one, so I would agree with, I think that's, I'm just more comfortable with that, just so there are no things happening, yes, you know.
Anyway, I think of the conservative.
I do go with either option, I mean, I've, I felt that sixty-four thousand was enough to cover on top of the fifty that we already got in there, but I, I could really do either of these.
Either one is, I, like, Devin said, it's great, you could really do a thing, and, so. I need a motion, uh, I make a motion to do option B.
Second. Okay, uh, any further discussion? Um, just one, one quick question, um, when do we expect the, uh, the auditors to actually do a report to?
Um, they've come out anywhere, I was looking back, between the April and June meetings. It kind of depends on when they get their stuff done. I, I don't wanna commit for them, this is their busy season, and Devin was working Saturday, he called me at eight o'clock, so I don't.
Somewhere between April, June, and November.
Okay, any further discussion? Uh, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, carries unanimously. Uh, Linda, could you read the, um, the motion, just so the world hears?
Uh, yes, the motion would need to transfer eighteen thousand, three hundred and four dollars and ninety-nine cents from the general fund to the harbor fund, uh, fund two fifteen, it would be transferring eighteen thousand, three hundred and four dollars and ninety-eight cents to, uh, fund two oh three, then North Second, North Third, and transferring sixty-three thousand, three ninety oh three to fund two oh two, the Main Street project.
And that's gonna leave us with, uh, funds to cash flows through the next?
It would leave you with eighty-nine thousand, thirty-eight dollars and forty-six cents.
What, what is the so-called nut per month, um, approximately, general expense?
For what, on?
General expense that we need.
What are our expenses per month?
Yeah.
I don't know. Um, for, for which fund are you talking about? The general fund?
A cash fund to, uh, cash flow that we need to operate the city.
Well, it all depends on what kind of bills you would have, and, um.
Okay, so we don't have an average, or?
No.
Yeah, I think, um, I, I, I think that you, um, I, I think that we need to, um, uh, have staff, um, actually do a cash flow projection, so that we can review that from month to month, and, um, uh, just to have a more solid picture of how we're doing financially, month to month. But, um, but that can come back as a, uh, separate motion. Um, I hate to ask this, but did we vote?
Yes.
Yesterday, okay? Yeah. All right, um, ten point seven, DeRex lease.
Uh, the DeRex lease acquired as of, uh, twelve thirty-one, we would, um, need to negotiate a new lease. I don't have any changes that I'm aware of, I need to be made other than current, instead of spending it out for another five years.
Um, and, um, the, uh, the monthly rent is five hundred?
Correct.
Um, is that, is that any kind of market rate?
I don't know how that would be established, um, I know we raised it at the last contract period.
Uh, how, how long has it been, um, at that?
Since January first, twenty fourteen.
Okay. And, um, and what we're, uh, the lease agreement here, uh, are we looking at, um, uh, oh, fi- five-year term?
Uh, yes, unless there's some reason not to, but.
So the, the, uh, the rent then would remain at five hundred for another five years?
Unless you guys vote differently, um, I will.
Under section nineteen, it states, lesser shall have the right to increase the rental to be paid by less fee commencing on January first, two thousand eighteen. Do you know why it was last year, that was in there?
I think that was before the contract expired, is what, that's what that's trying to say.
Okay.
You know, I don't know what rent prices really are in, in, um, in here, but it seems like for a thriving, um, business, five hundred dollars is, um, really reasonable. Is there any other, any other thoughts on that?
Yeah, I have some.
Um.
I, I, I'm, I'm just, you know, that, that's probably not a bad market rate rent, no matter where you are, 'cause it's hard to, I had several properties that I tried to rent over the years, and it was difficult to get anyone to pay much more than that, just because, especially, you know, he, Dave's a long-term guy, but to get anyone else to try to rent in Tower has been really difficult, 'cause most of the time, you know, the, the property owners wanted way more than that, and that's why some of the storefronts are empty. I'm just gonna say, you know, I rented the building you're in there, I, I rented that for probably fifty, you know, a month, and it's an entire building, so, you know, that's, that's the best I could do. I mean, you know, the building was also, I don't feel that number is unreasonable based on the market conditions in the tower.
You wanna buy it back, and we can rent it?
Increase rent twice a month.
But perhaps some of you are.
But I'm just saying, in, in order to try to keep some activity on the Main Street, not, you know.
I was just gonna support that, but in the spirit of supporting local business, that, um.
I'm glad to be fair, and I, I feel that's a reason, I feel that's a reasonable mark, based on my, what I know, what happens in Virginia, and in Ely, and in Tower, and all of that, so.
Well, no, you're, you're, you know.
I'm just, my comments about.
You know, I'm, I'm, I'm going to, um, you raised your hand.
Well, I just, I, I would just, uh, you know, uh, expound on what Steve was talking about. You know, my family's been here for thirty-two years, uh, we, we paid in excess of one and a half million dollars to local employees in the area. All five of my bartenders live in Tower sedan. Uh, we donated somewhere between eighty-eight, five thousand dollars to local charities in those years. Uh, property taxes in those years have, you know, uh, the city benefits by, uh, the property tax we pay, I don't, twenty-five hundred a year, or whatever it is. And, uh, I just, uh, I, I would just urge you to try to keep that to five hundred. Uh, we just finished our year, I was just with, it comes this past week, we had the worst year we've ever had, three hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars gross sales. Uh, you, you know, eight years ago, we were just under five hundred thousand, you know, four hundred and eighty-two thousand, we were at. So, you know, obviously, going out drinking isn't the deal. Uh, now, with the off-sale liquor store, it surprisingly still did a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Uh, with the new Super One opening, you know, people look and say, why would I buy a Meg of Captain downstairs for twenty-six ninety-nine, when I can drive to Virginia, get my groceries, and pay twenty, twenty, twenty-one something for the same bottle? I just, uh, you know, it's getting tougher and tougher. We lost, when the ledge was put in, the liquor store, however many years ago that was, we lost thirty-eight percent of our business. That was the biggest chunk. But then, in, we've had a couple of tough years with locals getting DUIs and whatnot, and don't ever, I have a master's in public safety, I would never advocate the wild, wild west people drinking and driving. I'm not saying that, uh, I don't drink, I've been sober thirty-one years, and I like to see people drink responsibly. And, but, as Steve was alluding to, we're, we're a long-term business, uh, we're, are, you know, we're loyal to Tower, um, and I would just hope you would, uh, uh, take into consideration how long we've been here.
Yeah, well, two, two things, one, one is, after the Tower sedan hockey match, uh, I was invited to come over there and, um, had a good time, two people bought me a beer, and that hasn't happened for a long time, so, um, I really appreciated that, and, um, and I think everyone knows that, uh, both my wife and I are, um, serious supporters of BiLocal, and, uh, that's what we wanna see in all of Main Street here, so, um, you know, you, your comments are, are well taken, well accepted.
Okay.
I just wanted to comment, just for the council, you know, that no matter what we do, we, we need to base it on some market rate, you can't be giving people rate, but based on my knowledge of the real estate around here, that's still a reasonable rate, and, so, if you, but I'm just trying to make sure everyone realizes that we gotta, you know, if, if, uh, what's hot and rents were fine enough to handle, then obviously, we would have to do something about that, so, in this case, you see, in the storefront, so.
Yeah, and I have, um, I, I, I have some due diligence kind of questions to ask as well, so, um, is there, um, are there any other, well, first of all, is your motion to accept? By, by the way, Linda, this is your recommendation, or is it just up to the council?
It's just up to the council.
Okay, um, is there a motion to accept?
I would move for a motion.
Is there a second? Okay, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Okay, um, ten point eight, Pine Street realignment proposal.
Yes. We had our funding in the only meeting, we said, we met. We're doing a project, uh, that starts here, at one sixty-nine, City Hall would be up here. Um, we received some MINDA funding, so this would be adding curb and gutter here, you see the sidewalk, sidewalk, curb and gutter there. It would choke off this engine, so you would have the speed demon road from, through here, um, create some additional parking at the same grade as the Civic Center entry, so you're not going down the hill, and if you're not sure on your feet, that can be problematic. Um, it squares off this alley to where it's actually plotted to be, so this becomes grass, and, uh, the alley gets moved a little bit. Um, this would be the tie into South Second. This driveway here, where you could come right here right now, you will not, you'll get stopped right there, and if you want to. And if you wanted to access a new park, you'd have to drive along, and then you'll take your car and, like, just pick your hands. Um, this would also then connect it to the new bridge, this is actually the old bridge that's on this picture, but, um, it would connect you to the new bridge apartment, and.
Yeah, that's, that's off the owner, and this one?
Yeah, but they're gonna come up and look at exact locations with me, but they would both like to retain their, uh, driveways on the Pine Street.
This, this one makes sense for sure.
Yeah, he's that overhead door right here, so.
It's always been there, so.
Um, what, what is this?
Uh, that is the, the street trail, no?
That's a kiosk, mobile kiosk, or whatever you wanna call it.
Okay. So, the iron ore bar is?
That way, over the bridge.
Oh, 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 okay, oh, of course, of course.
You can see the outline of the new bridge, just kinda care with the sidewalks where they would connect.
Yeah, I was a little, just a little disappointed, I was thinking, um, this was, um, bench warmers over here, but I understand. What is?
Planning is on there that this is our last meeting, and we're okay with the changes. That's good. Yeah, the only, the only real thing that came up was making sure that this is divided enough, that somebody doesn't think that they can just go right over the curb. But other than that, everything else was. Cause we have that issue down by bench warmers, where people think the highway and the road connect, and they have, so that was the only thing that we were worried about there, but.
Okay, and, uh, so we're looking, is there a, um?
So, so we're looking, we're looking for your approval on that layout, and, uh, once you approve it, then I would send it to, uh, Mapoff and get him, uh, to send that to Minda, where they're final approval.
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, um, the last, uh, the last item is, uh, ten point nine, the one that I added to the agenda, and, uh, the reason, um, I, I, it'll be clear, I think, when I explain why I think this is important to bring up now. And I, um, when I called, you only had a handout, I just, I was having, uh, uh, computer problems today. Um, uh, what, what I have here, um, is I, um, and, oh, first of all, I wanna make this very clear, uh, to the media and everyone here at the, um, uh, at the table, that, uh, there is no, um, uh, allegation or, or accusation whatsoever here, I, I simply don't know what's happening, uh, but, um, but I, 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 I find this, uh, very troubling, uh, that it's occurring. And it, uh, it's been occurring since, um, uh, I first started using City of, um, Tower email. Um, I noticed, um, very early on, when I started using the email, that, um, uh, that email, um, that had been opened and read was being, um, was disappearing. I thought that was odd, I don't, don't know exactly how that could happen, uh, but then, um, I, I began noticing that, uh, email would come into my computer, and, um, and you can tell by the highlighting and the blue dot, I, I use Outlook, that, um, that, uh, the email is unread, and I wouldn't get to it right away, but as I was watching it, suddenly, um, the email would open, and, uh, the blue dot would go away, and, uh, uh, it was obviously being read. I, um, I contacted, um, I use a Mac, and I al- I contacted Apple Care to ask how this could be happening, is there anything in my settings that could be causing email to automatically open? Um, I'd made my settings so that, uh, I had to double-click on any, uh, email that came in, uh, to make sure that, um, to make sure that, uh, I wasn't accidentally opening it, um, so you really have to, um, uh, you, you have to do a double, um, a double-click to make, uh, make the email open. And, uh, so, the Apple Care person, uh, the tech support person asked me to, uh, start screen recording each time, uh, an email came in. And what I have here is a number of, um, of screen recordings on my computer, where I've watched email come in, and anywhere from two minutes to twenty minutes after the email comes in, uh, without me touching my computer, it suddenly is opened up and being read. And, um, the, uh, the Apple Care person said, there's just no question, um, we went through my computer and, and, uh, uh, all of the devices, um, the only other device where this email comes in is my phone, and I make a point of never opening, um, any of my, uh, Tower, City of Tower, uh, email on my phone. Um, what I need to do is, uh, have, uh, permission from the council, uh, to contact the administrator of the, um, email account system, this is Techbytes, and, um, and get a listing of the, uh, access, uh, I can give the times that the email came in and the times they were opened, and what I need to have is the IP addresses to see, uh, who is, um, is opening this email. Um, I contacted the, um, uh, the League of Minnesota Cities, and the League of Minnesota, uh, League of Minnesota Cities, um, uh, said, uh, that they would send me, um, a statute, and they sent me a statute which, uh, says that, um, that email, even city email, um, is private until requested to be opened, and, um, and I have gotten no request whatsoever for, uh, any, uh, any email to be opened or to be read by anyone else. Um, so I need to have, um, uh, the Techbytes, uh, person give me the access logs for the times that this email has been, uh, been opened, and, uh, to see what IP addresses besides mine have gone into that account. Um, I can, I've recorded both on my phone, and I've recorded, uh, with screen recordings, and, um, and it's, and it's quite clear, uh, specifically from the Apple Care tech support, uh, expert that I talked to, that, uh, my email is being opened and read. And I don't, uh, as I say, I'm not making any accusations, I don't know exactly how this could happen, but, uh, but I need to find out, uh, because there's a statute that, um, uh, says this is illegal, and, um, and I would want to know, uh, who is opening the email, reading the email, and, um, and also anyone else that may have, um, uh, knowledge of this happening, uh, because, um, this is something that, um, would be, um, prosecutable. So, it's, uh, it's a very serious matter, and, uh, and I would like to make a motion that, uh, the access, um, reports for the email, uh, on my account be, uh, be given to me, so that I can, uh, check out the, uh, IP addresses to find out where it's coming from. And that's a motion.
I'll take that.
Any discussion? All in favor of, um, getting these, uh, access reports from our Techbytes, uh, person, uh, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, uh, unanimous, um, and, uh, Linda, then, um, uh, I would need to have the access information for, um, the Techbytes technician, and, uh, so that I, and I would like to visit with him, actually visit him. Okay? Okay, um, that, um, passed unanimously. Um, moving on to number eleven, presentation of claims, is there a motion to? Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Nope.
Uh, my head's ready for it, um, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, mine was an aye, so it's unanimous, uh, is there a motion for a journal?
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?